Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the Bible with liberty and justice for all. We'll call please.
Boss.
Present.
Kipia.
Present.
Graham.
Hughes.
Present.
Frye.
Present.
Schruller.
Present.
Fromm.
Present.
Barnes.
Present.
We have a quorum. All right. The first item is approval of minutes. Carrie, you called in about that one change on.
Yeah, Debbie said she fixed it.
Page four of six. Under Jayhawk Road, it said Eighth Road and it should have said Eighth Street. So that was the only change. Did anybody else have changed to the minutes from April 9? I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the minute, the regular minutes of April 9, 2018 with amendments.
Second.
Any discussion? Hall of favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. All right, public comments. Anyone who is not on the agenda can come to the podium, give your name, your address, and your ward.
I'm Michelle Whiteslaw. I'm not representing a ward tonight. I mean, I am a part of a ward, but I'm representing Marysville Convention and Tourism. And we have talked to Carla, to Mayor Grant about National Travel and Tourism Week, which is May 6 through the 12th. Tourism is a very important part of our community, as you all know, so we appreciate her, I guess, support of our event, of our week.
Okay, and she gave me a proclamation, so I will read it. It says, "National Travel and Tourism Week, May 6 through 12th. Whereas travel is at the heart of America's economic sustainability, it generates millions of jobs and billions in taxes. It is a vital resource in improving America's image. In Marysville, the travel industry contributes substantially to our city's cultural and social well-being. Travel is one of the most fundamental freedoms. Each citizen benefits from travel and tourism. The travel industry significantly enhances our personal growth and education while promoting intercultural understanding and appreciation of Marysville's history, geography, and culture. And whereas travel is one of America's largest service exports and is among the largest private sector employers in the United States. Across the nation, the travel industry is the seventh-largest employer. And whereas Kansas tourism is a 10.4 billion, has a 10.4 billion impact on the Kansas economy, and whereas travel has a positive effects effect on Kansas and the nation's economic prosperity and image abroad, it also impacts business productivity and to individual travelers' well-being. Whereas international travel to Kansas generated $105 million in spending in 2016, whereas meetings, events, and incentive travel are core business functions that help companies strengthen business performance, educate employees and customers, and reward business accomplishments. This in turn boosts the Kansas economy. In 2016, domestic and international business travelers spent $2.6 billion. Whereas leisure travel, which accounts for more than 60% of all trips taken in Kansas, spurs countless benefits to travelers' health and wellness, creativity, cultural awareness, education, happiness, productivity, and relationships. Whereas travel is a pillar of economic growth, creating jobs at a faster rate than other sectors. Now therefore, I, Carla Grant, mayor, do hereby proclaim May 6 through 12, 2018, as National Travel and Tourism Week in Kansas, and urge the citizens of Marysville to join me in the special observance with appropriate events and commemorations. And witness thereof, I have here unto my on this 23rd date of April 2018."
So with that being said, with all of that being said, Michelle.
And thank you for saying that, Debbie.
What are you doing specifically that week? I know you have Mother's Day weekend at the end of that.
Right. It's a really busy week for us, so our plan is to highlight, a lot of what I do, I feel like is highlighting the things that you can do while you're in Marysville, but we're gonna work a little bit harder that week to highlight the places that you can stay when you're in Marysville. Obviously, that's a very important, as the transient guest tax funds, my position in our activities as a whole. And then we're also going to work with the entire Convention and Tourism Board and highlight their favorite places in Marysville, what they would recommend tourists do, so just to give a little personal touch to our highlights for that week, so.
Well, cool. Well, you do a great job.
Thank you very much.
Being our cheerleader.
My committee does.
And your committee does a great job, so thank you for your efforts.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to share? Okay, we'll move on to business and discussion items. I'm sure this will be a short one. Jason, you're up.
I'll try to keep it short. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jason Hostensen, I'm an engineer with BG Consultants. And I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about the access management plan that I believe you have in your packets. And I also brought with me, and I gave each one of you laying on your desk there, just some talking points that I'm gonna go through tonight. First thing I want to stress, I know there was a lot of information in that plan, and you got it on Friday. We're not looking for action tonight. So just be aware of that. We're not necessarily looking for any council action tonight on the plan itself, but we wanted to get the plan to you so that you'd have some time to review it. And I wanted to get here to just kind of highlight the final components here of where we're at. We're kind of winding down this plan that, if you see in the background there, KDOT and Marysville partnered on a little over a year ago. We've been working through a bulk of the efforts last year, and then we've been to the council and planning commission, trying to tie up all the loose ends, get the final draft together, collect any final comments from the council, from city staff, and try to wrap this project up. Now, I might, in my talking points here, I'm actually gonna talk about the next steps first, and then I'm gonna go through some of the projects here just briefly. But if you look at that page here, the next steps, okay, so you've got the final draft with you tonight, and you're certainly welcome to take it home, read through it if you're bored and don't have anything else to do, but if you do read through it, or you hear any of the comments, or have any comments, if you could provide that to, say, Austin or Dave, a city staff, and then get that to me by mid-May, we plan on trying to wrap this up into a final report at the end of May, early June. And at that stage, I've also been in contact with KDOT, and they'll be probably presenting a memorandum of understanding, which is basically just an agreement between the city and KDOT saying, hey, this plan generally identifies the direction we would like to head with this corridor, and how we want to manage this corridor. And then that is the trigger that also opens you up to additional funding to help pay for some of the improvements, so. So with that said, I do want to kind of flip through just briefly, kind of as you're looking through the report there, I printed off this bigger sheet, the 11 by 17. Now, this is from the executive summary, page eight there, out of the executive summary. And it highlights some of the short-term and long-range, long-term plans, and just some of the ongoing stuff that you need to monitor and watch for along the corridor, Highway 36 corridor. And really, again, as I mentioned last time as a council, this is a tool for city staff. It's a tool in their toolbox, and they're looking at opportunities to improve something, or questions come in from a developer, or somebody wants to do something along the corridor, or they could turn to this map and say, well, you know, here's how it fits with all the other properties and the long-range vision, and how you can maybe get access here or there, or how it can all play out. We identified a few of the short-term goals. This was really kind of the more problematic areas, and some of the things that rose to the top in discussing it with, at the open house meeting with folks and commissioners and some of the stakeholder interests around town. You can see over here on the right, the recommended projects. Short-term, if you wanted to look at trying to do something at the Seventh Street intersection, US 36 and Seventh Street, some type of geometric improvement to better improve that north leg there, that's one of the candidates in there that we identified as need. Item two there, 10th Street, the junction with US 77. I'm actually gonna come back to that and talk just briefly about that, but that was one where there could be some geometric improvements and whatnot there. And then the third one on the list there, the US 36 and 11th Road, that intersection is currently, the volumes do meet traffic signal warrants, kind of identified in your long-range plan here of how all this corridor can come together as being a signalized intersection. That one is certainly, I think, possibly one that could rise to the top as a prime candidate if you wanted to pursue projects. And then we've got a number of, some of the longer-term improvements through the corridor, just to kind of help with traffic flow, consolidating entrances, access points, and things like that. I'm gonna jump back to 10th Street now, so I mentioned earlier, or just mentioned a little bit ago, when, assuming the city moves forward with this and enters into an agreement with KDOT, that yes, we generally want to follow this plan, knowing there may be some things that have to tweak and change over time, but generally speaking, this plan is our guide. It opens you up to a pot of funds through KDOT's Access Management Unit, and they'll pay for 100% of construction, up to $2 million. And I've been talking with Austin about possibly in rejecting some of that money, or asking for a project right off the bat at 10th Street, US 36 and 10th Street. Right now, we're in the midst of the design from 10th Street South, but there is a need to do some geometry improvements there at the junction of 77. And then, so if you flip to the page, the eight and a half by 11, so the next one right after the big sheet, flip the big sheet over. I wanted to point out this because, you know, right now, KDOT has a call for these types of projects out there. They're asking for projects through June 1st. And this might be a prime candidate to ask you to try to couple that onto the C-Clip project. And speaking with staff over there, speaking with staff at KDOT, it sounds like they don't know what kind of money they're gonna have yet. Legislative session comes back in next week, I believe it is, and then hopefully in about a month, they'll know generally what kind of funding they have available. And it sounds like it may be a very real possibility that they could pool the money out of the access group with the money that you've already got through the C-Clip, and combine this and do this as one project, and thereby save some costs, reduce both the city and KDOT's costs by implementing the project together.
And you mentioned earlier about that $2 million from KDOT. Is that an overall, or is that a per-project?
Per-project.
Okay.
And you can ask for as many projects as you want. They don't have a ton of money. The only thing they can say is no if they don't have it, but it's worth asking at least, or sending in an application if you're interested.
I think we just, didn't we just approve that $126,000 for engineering? And so you're saying, I'm trying to go through this in my timeframe, so you're saying it's gonna be at least a month out before we approve this, or six weeks? And then you're saying it's still gonna be beyond that before KDOT has funding. So are you gonna hold up engineering work on the C-Clip till we?
No, the, well, we don't anticipate it unless directed by the city to do so, but see, the C-Clip funding is already in place. That's a different pot of money, basically, south of the junction.
I think she's talking about if we want to include this in our design.
Yeah, I mean, the C-Clip starts at that.
How would that affect our design process?
So right now, we would continue forward with the design up to there, and if the city did want to proceed forward, we just wouldn't nail anything down tight at that location, so we can leave it flexible, so we can add that in.
When do we have to have that, spend the C-Clip money? It has to be done by what date?
So it's allocated for the state fiscal year 19, which is state fiscal year 2019, so that's gonna start July, end of this year. And then you just have to have it bid and under contract by June 30th of next year.
Okay.
Now, the one caveat is, if the city did want to pursue trying to add in a 10th Street intersection geometric project using access management money, there may be a way that they could shift and kind of delay it, and maybe even use it in another fiscal year, if possible. They have the flexibility to do that in some cases.
If necessary.
If necessary.
All right. Sorry, I just had to get my timeframe in my head here.
So that one, you know, just in talking with staff, the two projects, I guess, that rose to the top in the discussions and the thought process and timing with other things going on, one of them's the 10th Street project, and then the other one that received a lot of interest from folks that we had talked to was signalizing the 11th Road intersection. As I mentioned, you don't necessarily have an agreement with KDOT right now. They're making a call for these types of projects due June 1st, but they have said that, knowing that this is moving forward, and we anticipate probably having an agreement in place by then, they would certainly welcome the city of Marysville to go ahead and submit an application for projects if they wanted to.
So we would have to vote on this in May to make an application for June 1?
Yes. Yeah.
To change this intersection?
Mm-hmm. Yes. Yeah, so I guess.
And you anticipate that $850,000 is up and above the 1.6 million that we have anticipated for Clip?
Yes. Yeah, so this, the 850,000 ballpark budgeting project, that is in addition to the C-Clip, so we haven't gotten that pot of money yet. Now, if we did the math here.
Now, if we do that, I'm looking on this page 51, if we do this intersection, and you show closing some of those highway entrances, if we have people that choose not, they will be forced to do those closures where the blue and white are?
Yeah, the blue hatching kind of represents the long-term planned closures.
So if we do that intersection, we would have to make those businesses do those at this time?
No, you just zoomed in on your picture, right? Yeah, it's, this is just, those extra things are, if we can convince them to go forward with it, we could get some money for it.
But it would not limit us doing the rest of the project?
No, no. The access changes are really gonna be a long-term evolving thing, and you gotta try to, with this pot of money, you gotta try to do your best to close off entrances where it makes sense and where it's feasible. Doesn't make sense to take an access out from a business if it's gonna shut them down because they have no other way in. I mean, that's.
They wouldn't view that as negative by not doing that, KDOT?
They would want you to do your due diligence to try to pursue that in the process there, but, you know, quite frankly, this is gonna make a significant improvement to that intersection that they already have problems with, that I think has also revealed itself as, there's been some crashes related to it as well. So I mean, it could be more than just access improvement. It's geometry, highway function, it's two highways.
I agree with that from a turn radius standpoint, but, you know, still, for those individual businesses to shut those down, some of those will be a tough sell.
I think the ones immediately right close to the intersection, we'd need to pursue those. The ones farther out on the highway.
Almost to 11th Street?
Yeah. I don't see those as being.
Okay.
So ones closest to the intersection, their business requires those entrances. They literally couldn't operate there without them.
Are you talking about the mortuary?
Yeah.
Because they come in off.
They've got nowhere else to go.
Yeah. So where feasible.
And First Commerce Bank is planning.
The drive-through.
Drive-up facility there at night and highway.
The mortuary, do they drive in off the highway into that building? Do they drive into?
Max already discussed that he's gonna not increase or.
Yeah, they can't close that down.
He's conscious of the accesses for his building, so he knows.
Who's that?
Max, for First Commerce. I've already talked to him about if and when they build that.
Yeah, if it's feasible, you know, I've done a few of these different projects where access funding came into play, and you start with, hey, we need the access closed because it doesn't comply with regulations. And then you see, well, how does that impact a business? Is there a way to do something different? Can we do three-quarter access, maybe half, right-in, right-out? Maybe you just have to leave the way it is and hope that maybe in the future, if business changes there, or they change their side, or they expand, or do something different, maybe that's that opportunity to do that rather than now. So again, yeah, those are, those are long-term issues that, you know, if you can, the low-hanging fruit now, if you can get it, great. If not, if you try, or.
So the very last page of this, this $820,000, is just a recap of the page before, where you have estimated cost of $850,000?
Yeah, we were just rounding to a budgetary cost in the plan, so I did go ahead and print off the detail. You'd probably be looking at, well, I noticed we had property acquisition in there, that's actually a city cost, and that was just a stab in the dark, educated guess, I should say.
Hope it's not.
Yeah. If you look at, you can get appraisers involved, but you're probably looking at, if you went in after an access management project, and I can get more detailed cost estimates in May if the council were to pursue something here, you're probably in the neighborhood of $500,000 to $600,000 from KDOT with the remaining design and purchasing property being the city's costs.
So again, you said that because this is a different pool of money, it could be, improvement can be 100% funded by KDOT or any portion thereof? I mean, it's a potential 100%, but they could come in and say 80%?
Typically, no.
Okay.
Typically, on this one, it's a flat 100. They don't look at ratios.
For construction.
For it.
For construction. Just construction.
Just the construction.
Not the designer.
So they let the city pay for your cost of the design, figuring out how you want your project to look, and then they help you on the back end to get it built.
Okay.
So that's, I think, the highlights that I at least wanted to mention to you tonight. I'm sure if there's any questions, I'd be happy to ask or try to address them, or if you wanted to take some time the next couple, three weeks and review it. Get any comments to Austin, feel free to email me.
The other projects that you have listed, that, those aren't necessarily lower priorities? Like, they wouldn't, we wouldn't, it doesn't, by listing it as another project, it doesn't decrease the opportunity for us to get funding for it?
That's correct. You can pick and choose any project that the council feels is the highest priority of the council at the time and make applications. So if you feel that 10th Street's not where you want to pursue money, that's fine. You could go somewhere.
But you could do, you can make one application a year?
You could potentially ask for more than one. You could look at asking for two, and I, you know, I would almost encourage you, if you're interested in doing that, to maybe ask for two applications, because, one, the 10th Street project, you've got something happening right there, and KDOT can realize a benefit, too, for lower cost, one contractor, one project, one design, one administration. So that might be one application, and then you may pursue another application, say, at 11th Road, if that's where you want to look at a second project, and that was gonna fit more with '20 or '2021 funding. So that was gonna be a few years out.
I was thinking more like one of these smaller projects, like maybe the sidewalk project, trying to get Sidewalk out, Walmart, or this signal upgrades, that was only $50,000 each.
Yeah.
And so I didn't know if it was more likely to get a smaller project with a big project rather than they shoot for two big ones, and, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, I can say, I've had a lot of communities that said, well, we're just gonna submit a small project and hope that they have, you know, $100,000 left over at the end of the day when they start doling out all these funds to different projects, and they're sitting there with $100,000 left over, and they need somebody with a small project, and boom, they get it. And it's, they've been pretty successful at it, so certainly a possibility.
Okay. I did read this whole document over the weekend. So do you want me to tell you a couple quick comments?
Sure.
Diane, did you have a comment on the first cover?
On what?
On the first cover. It should say Diane Schruller instead of Denny Schruller.
I thought we had that changed.
I hardly had time to look at it.
I was waiting for Diane to pick that one up.
I saw that on our review, and.
Truthfully, I hardly had time to look at it. I picked it up today. I had a busy weekend with the convention, so.
I just had a couple quick questions. I read through the business owners you talked to. Is there a reason why, like, if I was going out to those intersections, you didn't talk to, like, Walmart, Hometown, Kramer Oil, Hall Brothers? Those all have major trucks, too. Is there a reason why you didn't talk to them?
We had some conversations early on with city staff, trying to hit some of the big users in the immediate corridor there. Walmart, of course, they've already got some improved access points in their kind of set, so we didn't go to them. Hall Brothers, they weren't on the list, but we just.
Okay, I just wanted, because they're all big truck, you know, impacted. So I saw that you were.
Last question.
Okay.
Is, on that 12th Road, I understand that it was maybe gonna still be all right if somebody wanted it, a big double driveway of horseens is still interested in Club 36?
Double driveway where?
So they can get a semi in while customers are coming in if they were still interested.
If you're talking to access onto the highway, I think that's still a sticking point to KDOT?
No, they want access over towards Hometown, but that's 12, there.
Yeah, I think that they can get an access.
They can get a 12.
I don't think that was ever a problem.
Yeah. If they want, if they get an access off 12, that's not a problem.
Right. 12th Road's gonna be under the city's jurisdiction, so you'll be able to dictate yes or no on that. The stuff on the highway, this plan helps KDOT say yes or no, and then if they have to say no, they have a document they could pull from and say, well, here's what we envisioned. Here's how you need to work with the Egyptian. Or.
On one of these, you were considering putting the light at Eighth Street?
Ah, yes.
And I'm kind of confused about that, because when you look at, like, the data that's on page 37, and you show AM and PM peak hours between the stoplight at 8th versus 10th versus 14th and 20th, the north-south levels are higher than the, all the other stoplights on page 37 and 38. Plus, on page 43, it shows that there's been the highest number of crashes on Eighth Street. So I'm not quite sure why we would ever pull the light at Eighth Street based on that peak hour.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that, because there was some discussion at the prior council meeting, and I was going to mention that here tonight, and I forgot to. So after our last council meeting, there was some discussions, for those of you that were on the council at that time, there was some discussion about whether that light was warranted and whether Eighth Street signal should come out. We went ahead and set up a camera, we collected daily traffic counts out there, and then ran some scenarios, analyzed that. So for signalized intersections, the, there's a guidebook, the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, TCD. It lists nine different warrants that would indicate whether an intersection should be signalized or not. And so we compared the data with those warrants, and what we found is that none of the data, even during the peak hours, met the warrants. It has to do with volume, enough side street volume to interrupt the flow of traffic to justify a signal. What we found was there just wasn't the volume there to meet a warrant. Now, does that mean the signal should come out? No, not necessarily. It may have been put in for a good reason at the time.
But again, if I go back to the data, I don't understand what you're saying, because when I look at the data on page 37 and 38, the north-south crossing traffic is greatest at Eighth Street, even more so than 10th, 14th, and 20th. So why would we ever consider taking Eighth Street light out?
10th Street's a junction with Highway 77.
Right.
So I mean, I think that's pretty critical.
Right.
And then the next spacing.
Is 14th Street?
No, I'm thinking to the.
Oh, going west?
I'm sorry, going west.
Uh-huh.
The intersection at Eighth Street does not meet the minimum spacing for signals at that location.
Yeah, but I'm just looking at the flow thing.
Right, right. So it doesn't quite meet the intersection spacing, so from a warrant standpoint, not only is the volume warranting a signal, but the spacing isn't either. Now, your street system is set up that way with a signal there, and that's what I'm saying. You don't necessarily need to take the signal out. We're not recommending that you do. We're just saying, if you wanted to pursue removing the signal, I think you would have about the same level of service, a little bit less on the side street. But if you wanted to keep the signal there, we would recommend you put in some video But if you wanted to keep the signal there, we would recommend you put in some video detection and some things to make it more efficient.
Well, I think that's what we definitely need to do, but the concept of pulling a light at 8th Street based on the highest crashes on page 43 was at 8th Street. We had 31 crashes there.
That was within that corridor area around 8th Street.
Yeah.
Now, the one thing you've got to think about, too, though, is lots of times when something isn't warranted and is put in, like, put in a four-way stop when it shouldn't be there, you'll actually cause more crashes. So some of those crashes could be related to the inefficiency of the signal. So putting in a video detection system so that it operates only when traffic's warranting it, and that it's more snappy and responds to traffic as demand is there, could address some of those crash issues.
Okay. Well, I mean, I often use 8th Street, and you have seconds to get across north-south, and a lot of, especially semis, run the red light, so that even cuts down, so maybe that's why there are crashes.
It could be.
But also with Land O' Corporation, and that's one of the flow areas from Land O' Corporation down North Street to 8th and off to the highway, all of them heading north.
Yeah.
And, but I'm all for making that a signal, video signal thing, and if that funding is available, I think we probably should aim for that.
Yeah.
10th Street, you cannot go north except for one block on 10th Street, so that, because it's a one-way, if the school is not in session.
Right.
The other thing is that, you know, you put down about sidewalks, and if I was going to put a sidewalk, could we, can we, you had recommended sidewalks on both the north and south side of the street, and the south side of Highway 36 has a lot of entrances and has zero sidewalks right now, but the north side has a lot of sidewalks, which it just seems like, it seems like a logical thing that we could fill in the gaps on the north side of the highway. Can we do one side of that recommendation? Okay.
Yeah, again, those are long-term recommendations, and most communities that I work in, they'll fill in those gaps as things develop. So, yeah, the Walmart sidewalk, they put it in, sidewalk that goes nowhere. Well, O'Reilly's comes in, Pizza Hut comes in, start connecting. Next thing you know, the pieces of the puzzle start to shake, take shape, and you see the bigger picture, and then maybe the city only has to fill in one or two small gaps. So that's typically the way I'd approach that if I was in your position.
Okay. Those are all my questions. You got another question, Terry?
I just have one, because I know there's a lot of people that live here that, there's always talk about how they're going to help with these grants and everything, but some folks sit there and they think, "Yeah, but what's it going to cost us? How's this percentage figured out?" You know, for like, what will be the bill for the city when you're talking millions?
So, so the access management funding that you can chase with this plan in place, they will pay for 100% of construction, up to $2 million. And so then, that's when, you know, Austin and staff has turned to us, because we do a lot of these projects, we've got some, we look at bid tabs and construction price indexing and where things are headed and how much your project may cost. Run a cost estimate, make sure you've got some contingency in there to work with, because if you're going to ask for one and a half million, and we think it might be 1.7, well, ask for 1.7, because you can always spend less than they give you, but it's going to be hard to go back and ask for more. So we set that project budget for construction, and then you look at the design and some of the other costs, utilities, things like that. City staff will weigh in on that as well. They'll know where the utilities are at, right-of-way and things like that, and then start searching through those and trying to identify those costs as well.
So the example on this last page, Terry, if you see the line above the 820, on this last thing you gave us that we didn't have in the packet?
Yeah.
Yeah, at the very last page, out of that 820, the 164 would be our cost.
Roughly, yeah. Now, that's a, that's a budgetary cost. I can tell you, if we were doing the design, you know, our, our figure would be included in all that cost, but we're already there, we already surveyed a lot of the area, and if we included into the set of plans, we're going to be able to keep our fees down reasonable, or maybe below reasonable, because we're putting it in with another set of plans there. There's going to be some miscellaneous stuff that pops up that you can't identify until you get into the project. So that's why we've got some contingency in there to try to deal with that.
So the 164, though, we would also be, on our side would be the property acquisition?
Yeah.
So it'd be the 164 plus 100, so it'd cost us 264,000 out of pocket?
Depending on...
Just an estimate?
Yeah, just an estimate. I mean, if you can get that building for $35,000, you can knock 65 right off the bat, right there, so...
So we'd still have to come up with about a third of it?
Okay.
The thing I saw, there was the 7th Street corridor and the improvements on that. Basically, I think we're the, we get wind turbines in so that they can get out and get turned onto the highway. And then it was also talked about that if the trail gets connected through town, that they would recommend putting bump outs there, which would probably be a good idea. But, I mean, if you make bump outs that they can drive over with their... Okay. Yeah, and that, we had a highlight of that in concept on page, page 50 in the report
You know, on that page 50, that, why did you go narrow on the...
So the red, that red area is like a, it's a truck apron.
A lay-down.
So that's going to be a little bit lower, but some type of different delineated pavement so that we don't have cars hanging around there at 50 miles an hour trying to make a right turn, not just 30 miles an hour, whatever the speed limit is, but it's try to channelize traffic where we want them to be, but give the trucks that room to off-track with their big, heavy trailers and come around. And actually, if you see in that picture, on kind of the east side of, coming down 7th Street, if they were to tie a trail in, we would suggest then pull that over to the side so it doesn't get run over by...
But even at the top of that same picture, why would you make, ever make it that narrow, knowing that on down that street is a lumberyard and Keller's Auto Repair and camper parking and Napa parking? Why would we ever go narrow, like at the Carolina intersection?
The, when you tighten your intersections, it helps with pedestrian movements, they aren't as exposed for as long a time, and it helps define where parking should or shouldn't happen near an intersection. Bear in mind, that's concept. That's, those are, those lanes are the same width as you have on the highway. So if they're turned and headed straight north or coming straight south, they should have plenty of room to get through there.
Even when we were negotiating the MOU with the railroad, they said all the, the most important part was here. They needed that intersection to maintain that width. After that, they just needed normal, normal lanes.
I know, but I was thinking more of the other businesses down that corridor that's going to use the road.
Right, but it's, it's the same concept, because they're, they would, they would just need that turning radius. For the, for the trucks that they have, they're much smaller than the wind turbines coming through.
I know, but the, from a lumberyard standpoint, their business is right there. It seems like that they wouldn't want a narrow intersection to enter into.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that's just all, and, like you said, it's a concept.
That's a concept, too. So, yes, there, believe me, there's, there's going to have to be a lot more design details put into there.
So all those things are just potential, potentially?
Yeah, it's to try to convey the intent of what we're doing there, or what we're suggesting right now.
Okay. Do you guys have any other questions for Jason? So we are supposed to look at this, if we have any other questions other than the correction of Diane's name.
My turn.
Get them to Austin. Will we see another copy of this?
Yeah, so, so once, KDOT's doing the same thing right now. Their staff's reviewing this final draft. We will pool all this together mid to late May, make the final revisions, and then issue a final report, which we'll deliver to city staff, it'll be here on file at City Hall, and, and then that is when KDOT would approach the city with a MOU, saying, "If you guys like this, we've gone through..."
We accept it as presented.
Yeah. Yep.
All right. Thank you, Jason, for answering all our questions.
Sure thing.
Is he also covering pages?
If he needs, yeah, if he needs. If you have any questions, yes.
Now, now I'm saying...
Change tasks?
There's the, you know, right there. I put on your guys' desk this map right here, and this shows the proposed area for the, what I'm calling Phase 2 of CCLIP for South, or for I-70, not I-70, Highway 77. So we're, this year, we're doing everything from Highway 36 to, down to the second set of new crosswalks that we just put in, and then Phase 2 would be the rest of it down to our line down by, down by the bridge. So that's what this map is showing you, and we are hopefully submitting an application for a CCLIP grant to cover the rest of this project for the rest of the highway, and this is what we're talking about tonight.
And does this have to be in by June 1st?
The application has to be in by May 4th.
May 4th, right?
Correct.
May 4th?
Next Friday.
Next Friday.
And this here, on there, it says, North Park Drive to South Railroad Bridge. Do you know what that means?
I think he probably meant north of...
Spring Street?
City Park.
City Park. I noticed that, too.
Is it, what is that street called that goes to the park?
There's no, I don't think it has a name.
Oh.
I think he probably said it was the North driveway into the park.
North Park Drive.
Yeah, because the, there's a driveway right there, yeah. North, North Park Drive.
North Park, North Park, City Drive.
So this would be actually allocated in 2020, then, possibly?
Yeah. So we would follow the same process we're doing if we're awarded it. So this year, we're doing engineering for the first part of the CCLIP.
Right.
And then we're constructing it next year, and then while we're constructing it next year, we're doing the engineering for the second half.
And then if we add in this TA project...
The, what do you mean TA?
This one we just talked about.
Oh, the access.
The access management project.
Yeah.
I call it TA, is that not wrong?
TA.
Access?
That's actually another part of the...
TA is the, the crosswalks.
Alternative.
Yeah.
Okay, so what's this one called? What's acronym?
CCLIP.
No.
Oh, access management, it's just called that.
Access management, that's AM project, okay.
There you go.
So if we do this AM project, we would do that at the same, we would bid that, we would ask for that grant monies and coordinate that with the first CCLIP project, and this would be a year later.
I think that would probably be the priority. Now, that, depending on funding, if they came to you and said, "Well, we've got this," and then at the same time, hopefully, cross your fingers, you get lucky, this, we get this funded, there might be an opportunity to put the access funds into this project as well, if they can't cash flow it with the first phase project.
And CCLIP is a reimbursement project, so we have to have all the monies upfront?
You pay, I think we pay our part, so the, for this year...
So it's not a reimbursement? We just pay our portion?
Our portion, yeah.
Okay. So we just have to come up with the 420,000?
Yeah, you would pay...
For how much, Carl?
The 420 here at the bottom?
You would pay design initially in any property acquisition, and then KDOT bids these projects for you. So they will receive the bids, and then at that time, they will say, "Okay, based on the bids, you, you need to escrow the remainder of your money with KDOT," and they'll have that number at that time.
Then, this million-dollar max will probably hold true for another year?
Yeah, that's been, it's, it's actually been a million for years, years and years.
And you know this access of Jackson, going, going west on Jackson Street? Kevin, is, is that something we need to make wider? Kathy, you drive the school bus all the time.
Oh, they're not trying to make it wider.
I just wondered if we need to make it wider. Do we need to make that wider on Jackson?
No.
No? Okay. I just wanted to ask a question.
I got you.
He's a bus driver. We get through there pretty easily.
The biggest thing that goes down there is buses, right? Or do semis travel?
It's still a designated truck.
Yeah. So, so is it big enough circumference there?
Well, the highway's plenty wide there, I mean, if they swing to come through there.
I've never, I don't think there's a lot of marks on the curb, it does look like people cut it.
Well, do they have a curb on that side of the street, the north side?
Yeah.
There is a curb?
Yeah, because there's a, or a crosswalk.
Yeah, there's a crosswalk in there.
Okay, just wondering.
Yep. So the idea is basically, you're approving to put an application in so we can get a...
By May 4th.
By May 4th, and that's what this is all about. It's not to approve that all this is going to happen exactly as, as they say it's going to happen, it's just...
Do we need to make a motion to make that application by May 4th?
Yeah.
You're, you're prepared to get that done by then?
Yeah, no, they've been, they've been, since the, since KDOT sent the email out, they've been working on this, this application.
Move to approve, we proceed with the application for the second stage of the CCLIP project for South Highway 77.
Second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7-0. All right. Anything else, Jason?
That's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Daniel.
Thanks for coming.
How are you doing?
All righty. This next one should be a lot easier. It is Policy A81 about bids and proposals to have a second person present, and this reflects my changes as well as Darlene's. It's on page eight.
I move to approve Policy 881, the policy for bids and proposals for goods or services requiring council approval.
Is there a second?
Y'all seconded that.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7-0. The next item is the very next page on page nine, it's ordinance number 1861. The only thing I wanted to change was, it's plural there, so I just wanted to change it to an ordinance vacating a certain alley in the city of Marisol, but that's the only thing I had. Did you guys have any changes to that? So I would entertain a motion as amended on that ordinance?
Move to approve ordinance number 1861 as amended.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Roll call?
Boss?
Yes.
Pipia?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Throm?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
7-0.
All right. And then the next item is the resolution, the municipal investment pool. So Debbie's going to tell you guys just a little bit about this.
This was, this came about as a recommendation from Ken Kekefer, the city's treasurer. He suggested rates are, are moving up, and he suggested proceeding with investments. So we haven't done this for several years, and the way that we do it is, of course, we bid local, and I learned about the other option. If we don't, if we don't get sufficient rates from local banks, then there is this option of investing with the state municipal investment pool. In order for us to have an account there, they need this resolution passed. And the rates, I think right now for long-term, right around 1.5%, 1.7%, and then the local banks also, there's a requirement that they would look at, look at the state's rates and kind of, you know, if our local banks can't come up to that rate, then, you know, we can proceed and invest here with the state pool.
Up to what? I didn't get the point.
If the, if the local banks don't come in as high as the state rates, then we can proceed going... proceed going to the state.
The state rates are what? I didn't, that's part of the...
Right now, I think right around 1.7% for long-term. Even higher on some.
So we carry about an $8 million cash balance. So of course, we're not going to invest all that because we need some cash. But we do have excess money that we don't draw on. So let's say if we take a million dollars and we put it in this, right now, we're earning 0.6, and we can earn 1.6. We're earning $10,000 just investing in this investment pool. And like Debbie said, it hasn't been available in the past because interest rates were so low. And I think, as you said, banks didn't need any money. There was plenty of money floating around, and so now...
It's gone up a little.
Yeah. So even, even if we do a million and make $10,000, it's better than not making $10,000. And like I said, we carry about 8 million. So Debbie will have to sit down with Austin, I assume, and figure out how much excess money to invest in. It could be for a six-month rate, or it could be for a year, depending on what they think when we would need that money. A great example is the swimming pool sales tax money. That money, we can't prepay for the pool for several, for another couple of years. So it's a great opportunity to put that money and earn some money on it. Yes, Terry?
Yeah, when Debbie said about long-term, I didn't understand that.
It can be short. It can be six months. Is the shortest term six months or 30 days?
I think six months for the pool.
Okay, so six months. Anywhere from six months to a year or two.
And I think the, yeah, I think, I think you can, I don't know how far out, but...
Can you decide to do it for a year?
A year's an option, yeah.
And it could have different amounts for different lengths of time.
Yeah, they do.
So you can space it out.
So it's just a way to...
In the past, I think they even did 30 and 45 days when I used to bid.
So I think it's a great option for the city, since we have monies that, you know, thankfully, we're in a position, we don't use all the money that we have. We're in a good position. We have reserves set up throughout that we won't draw on or don't anticipate drawing on.
Do you have an overall history of having this reserve for how long?
Well, the reserve for the swimming pool sales tax, we thought we could pay it off in 2022.
Seven years from, yeah, somewhere in there.
Yeah. So you think about it, we have two years of that money we can't prepay the pool with.
Right. Well, that's why I was wondering if we could figure out which one of those that you had to do first, and then get the longest interest rate, even if they, is that what you're talking about doing?
Yeah, I think they're just going to practice it.
Which is what we did, we did kind of do that already with some pool funds. We did that last year.
Or you ladder it.
We, we, we put it, we put it in for...
The reserve, the bond reserve.
The bond reserve for four years.
That's true, we did.
So we've already, we've already done some investment a little bit. But this one is on a large margin.
The PBC money.
Yeah.
The PBC money. We opted to do it. But we haven't done it with the other, any of the other money in the city.
Right.
And this resolution, it just authorizes us to open an account there. It doesn't mean that we have to use them or we have to put any money. There's not a minimum or anything like that. So in fact, the minimum's like 25,000, so...
And I talked briefly with Debbie about internal controls, as far as, you know, making sure who's making the investments, and there's a double check and everything. And she said that would be in place.
Yeah, we'll make sure we've got something that, you know, you either, you know, the mayor, the mayor and myself and the treasurer sign the checks. So it has to be at least one live signature, and we have to do some other things at the bank, too, so.
So I think it's a good option for the city. Are you guys in agreement?
We're guaranteed a return on this. I mean, it doesn't...
Once they bought, we put it out there. We put it out for bid, right? They come back and say, we'll pay you such and such on that money for that timeframe.
Okay.
And then we can either go with a local bank option, or if it's not as high as this investment pool, we'll go to the investment pool.
Okay.
So I guess we just need to entertain a motion for this, to approve this resolution to have this alternative available.
I move that the state of Kansas Municipal Investment Pool Resolution be approved.
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. All right. No notices or hearings. The only thing on the consent agenda is investment of idle funds. So that means that when that amount is determined and the timeframe is determined, so give that opportunity to make that investment. Is that what we're trying to approve on this consent agenda? And then I asked her how we would know what was done, and she said she would either...
We'll put it on the CCLIP's report.
She'll put it in the highlights, and then she'll also have it documented on the financial statements each month. All right? So I guess we just need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. The next item is the appropriations ordinance.
Move to approve the appropriation ordinance number 3673 in the amount of $279,683.65.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Is there any discussion?
Well, I might mention that what we pay for our excellent employees, this month, we're paying Booth, Kraus, and Blue Shield Health and Dental Insurance for May, $40,101. We are, and then payroll was $37,454. And then Capers, which I'm trying to define.
Some of the employee contributions, right?
Eight thousand, $56.
So, and included in that is the contributions from the employees themselves as well.
And the health insurance as well.
Yeah, and the, yeah, all of that.
As well as $62,000 of inter-fund transfers. But you were just looking at all the employee costs. Okay. Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Boss?
Yes.
Pipia?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Throm?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Seven zero.
All right. Austin, you're up.
First one up is basically, I'm requesting to send out for bid requests on two lots that we, the city owns on Jackson Street. It's the description I can, the only description I can come up with is wherever 8th Street would normally go through is at the corner of 8th and Jackson on the southeast corner. That's the only thing I can come up with as an app description. But there are two lots there. They're not FEMA lots. On the other side of 8th Street, there are FEMA lots. But I'm looking to get the approval to see if we can sell this, these two lots for development. And I do have a mistake in the, in the bid request, request for proposal, and it's under section four, item B, the price for the .35 acre. I don't know how many acres these two lots are right offhand, but it should, I'm going to change it to price for the two lots and just make it simple like that. And then I think Carla had a, the mayor had a request to...
She, in the zoning under C there, it says currently zoned. I just said, can you go ahead and put it in, which is currently zoned R3. Just to let them know what it's zoned.
Well, that lot is not as deep because of the creek. Is that going to matter?
No, it, they're two full-size lots.
Goes through the creek?
There's no, the creek actually...
It curves north there at that property.
It does.
It does.
Unless I'm looking the wrong place.
Yeah.
It's kind of like, it doesn't go backwards for.
So there's 8th Street right there. So these two lots right here.
I'm telling you, the creek turns north there.
Yeah, but the base of the lots must be the bank. I mean, is that...
Yeah. And...
It looks like a short lot.
They're still there now.
Either way, they, I have interest in these lots.
That's fine.
That's, yeah, I mean, they...
I'm just asking if, because I don't want them to go in and fill the, if they fill that property, and I don't want them to fill the creek in back there either. That's why I was asking if what the depth of the lot was.
With this, they will require, I think they have, I request plans for the lot, and we can review that at a time, yeah.
Are there pins there so they know where they are, the lot lines are?
Technically, yes, there should, there should be. Yeah, I mean, we have...
So they should be able to find that.
They should.
If they, if they go and they look at 5 and 6, does it tell them how deep it is at the courthouse?
Yeah, the lot size is, yes, is listed. And I can find, I actually have the lot sizes on our file that the county gives us. But they can go, and I've seen it, they have it at the county, too.
Okay. As long as they can figure it out.
Yeah. Like I said, I just don't want them to fill one in.
Yes.
I sure would prefer the word buy or use over develop. I don't think that's fair to everybody, because somebody might want to buy the garden.
And they sure are welcome to submit a bid. It's, it's up to the discretion of the council to accept or deny. But this document itself, I mean, we're not technically, that's not the way to put it, we're not discriminating against anybody. We can sell to however, to whoever we want. And that's, that's the legal way to put it.
Well, it changes who thinks they could bid on it, because it says developer, and if you're not a developer, then you wouldn't be wanting, you wouldn't, they might spend more money than the developer would.
Right. But if we're, as the city, trying to encourage development, I mean, that's, that's, that's the only point I have anyways.
Well, as long as we make it clear that they don't, just kind of like the other lot, they don't have to develop it.
Okay. I'll put that into the bottom.
You say we don't have to accept either one, right?
Let's see. The city reserves the right to reject any and all proposals.
Okay.
Or portions of proposals to waive minor deficiencies or to solicit new proposals on the original project or on a modified project as may be necessary.
Okay. Well, you're a developer of your lots down there.
Been working on it today.
Okay. So do we need a motion to approve this request for proposal?
Um, yeah.
As amended with those two changes?
Yeah. Or, I mean, if there's a consensus, and as long as everybody knows when, when the bid date is. I mean, that's really the main portion of this, so we can get the bid date out there, and we'll advertise this in the paper.
Okay.
And the bid date is...
May 23rd.
May 23rd by 3:00 PM. And that, 3:00 PM is when we would be opening any bids, any, and they should be sealed. We would be opening bids then. And if anybody has any questions about this lot, they can be submitted by, or these lots, they can be submitted by 5:00 PM, May 22nd, to, to myself.
So are you guys okay for this request for proposal as amended? Yes? Proceed?
Proceed.
Proceed. Let's just get some notes down here. Put the facts rolling bottom. Anybody can read here. Next one is bids for changing out all the windows, all the exterior windows, which there's no interior windows, so all the windows of City Hall, minus obviously the doorway, the exterior doorway over the front, and then the door itself, because those are both relatively new. I did, actually, a mistake was pointed out to me comparing Manco to Hometown and Cromie. Manco only put together 36 of these vertical windows when it, when everybody else bid 44. And I found, I found the reason why, and it might have been a mistake on my part. I said all exterior windows. Well, there's eight windows right here that face the lobby way that I was just talking about. They go from that storage room right there where we keep the chairs, and they also have from the City Hall lobby that they didn't include. But I asked them, and they said they would be, if you break down the cost per window, they're all the same, pretty much the same size, just add, divide that out, and they gave me an email on it. Divide 15,168 their bid by 37 windows, and that's your price per window. And it came out to be about $410. And then their email said that would add $3,280 to do those windows, which would be to our benefit if we do all the windows at the same time. Because I've, I just was looking at these windows, and here the seals are coming out, at least one of them is. And if we update the seals, get them, get them all to the same grade, we don't have failing windows anymore. And they, let's see. And also, another mistake on Manco's bid was this, the odd window, the 28, and it says by 82, which should be 54-inch window, was a typo. And so it should be a 28 by 54.
So we had three bids from Manco with the additional eight windows that would bump it up to 18,448. And then we have Hometown, and we have Cromie Lumber.
Right.
You know, I do kind of have, I know the low bid is Manco, but I do struggle a little bit not supporting local businesses. We have two lumbermen.
The issue, and I know, I talked, I talked with each one of them, Hometown and Cromie, to get them to the, because Manco's providing commercial windows straight out. That's their, that's what they provide. Cromie said they would have to make some modification, if I'm right, Darlene, to make them to the commercial standard that they can get. And I believe Home, maybe don't...
But is that what they bid, though?
I, I, they would have...
The 23308?
No.
Does that include making commercial grade?
I don't think so. Because, let me pull that up, 23...
Well, that we would need to know.
There you go. Cromie.
That's a commercial bidder.
130.
The difference in Cromie's and Manco at this point is $4,860.
And if they attach on more to make it commercial.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
If they attach on more to make it commercial, that just, that takes them way farther out of ballpark.
I don't know what that, exactly that means, to make them commercial. What does that mean?
Make them commercial grade. Like Manco's are commercial windows.
You mean they're thicker, they're...
To fit them, because they, these frames right here, the metal frames that fit within these windows, that just...
Flip in.
Get them together. The way one of, whoever was going to install them, this has been about a month, but they would have to make some modifications on how they install them.
Well, you know, like on Cromie's, they have this listed exofoil, black exterior, exofoil, finished black interior. Is that to make them commercial grade? I mean, help me here.
It was something with the frame.
Well, doesn't this sound like it's frame?
It does.
If you were grading them, it's a middle grade. There's better windows, probably a lot worse. There's better windows, probably a lot worse. When they say "commercial," that's about, you know, it's just standard deal that you're doing construction.
Well, for, Hometown was bidding fiberglass windows, the frames, which is what you would normally put, what I had put in my home, was just the, you take out the wood frame, you put in the fiberglass to fill that space in.
So you're saying that's not good?
That's not for this space.
So you're saying it would defeat our trying to save energy by doing it that way?
I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't exactly fit into, I mean, it just, I don't think it would look right. I mean, that's a personal standpoint. Another thing, and I was talking, I think I was talking with Cindy about this, don't we have a, our policy on comparing local to...
Percentage?
10% I have to, our purchase policy.
Purchase policy.
10% advantage to the locals, but if it's more than 10%, you go, I'm pretty sure this is...
That's what I recall as 10%.
So in other words, if it's within 10%, we would pay the extra percent to the lumber yard.
To the low.
But this is way more than 10%.
Way more.
Yeah, but again, I just want to reiterate this.
I know.
$4,000, to keep $20,000 in the city of Marysville is a plus.
Well, could you, how you contacted them and found out what the price difference would be to get them up to commercial?
Or you don't think that these are commercial listed here?
I, I just, it's been two months since I asked them to do this. And I was waiting for another local bid, but they never showed up, so it's...
Well, we don't have to bid this, do you want to find out?
I'll find out.
Unless you guys are, you know, if you are hardcore that it's not going, if these are commercial grade and these are 4,000 more, would you still consider going, since it's local, or not? I mean, if you're gonna...
I don't know. That's a lot of money.
And I think we're bound by our policy.
For a vinyl window versus a steel window.
Well, we're not bound to buy the lowest bid.
Well, I mean, we create, well, no, but, I mean, we get 10% spent on a rule every other time it was local.
But we do our police cars, police vehicles, we only keep local.
Yeah.
I'm just, I hate having two lumber yards and not using them, so...
Yeah, I would just, I would like to have a...
Find out.
Find out.
Do you think it's a problem with delaying discussing this?
Nope, nope. This was a, since I found out we, this is a bad way to put it, found out we had some excess money from making our City Hall more efficient, we, I was just trying to make it more efficient.
Okay, so you'll just come back and make sure that these are commercial grade and we'll discuss it next time?
Yes.
Okay.
I can do that. One more thing that I neglected to put on, which is a relatively small thing, I put this picture, there's a couple pictures of a trailer, and attached to a quote. We would like to purchase this trailer, which is down at Titan in Waterville, to put the crack seal machine on the backup. Currently, for crack sealing, we're using three different vehicles. One for blowing out the cracks with the air compressor, one for the massive melter on the back of a truck, and the other one is for the sealer itself when you're going along the streets. This would get rid of one of those vehicles where we could tow it behind the melter.
You just want the trailer, not the tank?
Not the tank that's on it.
Would it be permanently mounted to it?
There would be a way, no, it wouldn't be permanent.
Because they have to roll it off and on, because it's a crack seal.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I just know there have been other times when they wanted another trailer.
We, in fact, we didn't come, we didn't come to this, we tried to retrofit a trailer of the Parks Department, see if that would work, and it wasn't going to work out, we'd have to spend a lot of money. But, no, this would be a multipurpose, because while we're not crack sealing, we can use it.
Couldn't you put a ramp on the front of it to put that small spreader on, too, without having to pull it around that other little trailer?
The, what'd you say?
The little cart that the oil goes in off the big tanker set in the back of this.
That's what, this would be.
The big tank. But that's what I said, could you put another ramp towards the front where you could push the little cart onto it, and you wouldn't have to drag the other truck and trailer around, too?
To make a longer trailer.
Put it all on one.
No, no, it, we need the first vehicle to pull the air compressor.
I understand that.
Yeah, and then the second vehicle would be towing this and the melter. Right? That's what, there'd be only, there'd be only two vehicles.
Instead of three?
Big melter.
Yeah, and the, and the...
And the push cart.
Yes.
When we go on this trailer.
Yes.
That's what I'm asking.
Yep, yep.
Maybe a wood deck like this?
Yes, this is the exact...
Where would it be stored?
At the street shop, probably.
Bathroom? That's always a concern, too.
I'll take that picking table out.
And Mayor, would it be able to be used to haul a squirrel around?
Yes.
We had some discussion about that at noon today.
Yeah, this is probably, if the crack seal is on and off, it's going to kind of beat up on it.
That's why I was a little worried about the wood deck maintenance, and I just thought if we're loading and unloading a lot, I mean, there's advantages and disadvantages.
Won't the crack sealers leave, remain, trail?
Probably.
So it will, is the wood better than a metal?
Yeah, we, if, if we ruin a metal on this, we probably wouldn't be able to replace it. The wood, we can maintain.
So you think, as you wear it out, you're gonna...
Well, the nice part about the big melting pot that goes on it, I mean, it's enclosed where the forks go in on the top and bottom, so I mean, it's not like...
You're not going to be digging into it.
Yeah, into it, trying to hook into it, because it's got slots in it for the forks to go into.
And we spent, Gary spent quite a bit of time trying to search for these specifics, and this trailer comes up, because we needed a trailer with the wheels all the way to the back.
Right.
So it would hold the heavy equipment right there. And then there'd be a slight modification where we put the ramps on the back.
It's not a dovetail, is it? The back's not a dovetail, it's just a square back.
Right, yeah. So we, slight modification, but this one is currently sitting down in Waterville, like I said. And the total price comes to $2,900.
And you want to take it out of what fund?
Um...
MRR?
Yes.
Okay, does anyone want to make that motion?
That's the spare and everything, like, as pictured, right?
As pictured.
Okay. I moved to purchase the trailer from Waterville for $2,900.
Out of MRR?
Out of MRR.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven of them, all right.
All right, I think that is all I had on my list. Yes, my report is done.
Debbie?
It is.
Sure.
Okay, you'll see in front of you, there's an application for fireworks discharge prohibition waiver, coming from the Union Pacific Depot Society. They're asking to discharge in May, on May 27th, Sunday, May 27th, looks like, from 8:30 to 8:45. And they're going to do some of these skylanterns over at the depot.
Okay, skylanterns, remember?
Chinese lanterns?
Yeah, those floating...
That's what people think of them as.
Well, they're, you know, I, I think they're beautiful, but I'm a little concerned with the dry weather we're having and floating fire.
It would have to be fire marshal approved. It would have to be fire marshal approved. The fire marshal has to sign off on that, you can't have a burn ban in effect or any of that stuff. Because, you're right, it is a concern. They're designed as such that, and there's festivals to put these on, because I had the same concerns when I was, first heard the idea. They're designed as such that they burn themselves out, they can't fall, I mean, nothing's impossible, but they're, they can't fall until they're out of fuel.
Can't fall.
So they burn themselves out, and then they just come back down.
Because the heat keeps them up.
Yeah, the heat, the heat's what keeps them up, so when the heat goes out, then they can't, that's when they come down. They plunge.
So, won't they spread debris everywhere wherever they fall?
Supposed to be biodegradable.
They're pretty, yeah, they're like balsa wood, I mean, they just degrade, you wouldn't even know what it was after probably a season or two, if it was sitting out in the open.
After a season or two?
Like weather, I mean, like a winter or two, because they're made out of like wooden paper, there's no plastic or anything.
Well, if they float off into somebody's yard, you don't think they're going to be upset?
Well, it's probably, could be another county.
Well, yeah, it could be Nebraska, I'm curious about that.
I found three of them in my yard last Fourth of July.
See, somebody's, people have been setting them off at Fourth of July, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, for a few years now. Yeah, you see them.
You, I've seen them, because you're kind of like, what is that?
Yeah, they get up there, they get to them.
Oh, yeah.
They get up like the slipstream.
They can also get caught trees, too.
You're saying that the fire marshal would have to sign off on it on May 27th?
Because I told him, I said, and I'm, full disclosure, I'm tangentially involved in this, and I said, "Well, I want to make sure," and they said, "Yes, it has to go." These are fire marshal approved, they go through Richardson Fireworks, because they're, that way it's, not the ones off Amazon that are actually problematic, they're full legal, and they can't be discharged without...
Would he have to sign off on them the day of the...
No, I don't think it's like, I think you have to call, make sure, they check and there's no burn bans in effect or anything like that. I mean, there's not, they aren't physically coming and inspecting like a commercial operation.
So you would have, so if there's no, you would just know, calling the county to confirm?
Yeah, they say if it's, if it's not, the wind's over a certain speed, if you don't want them to go, you can't put them up in the rain or anything like that. What's that?
State Fire Department?
The state, the state has rules, but I don't know how much of that goes to the local. It'd be one of those, I wouldn't even want to do it unless everybody along that chain knew what was happening. I don't think it's worth risking it, yeah.
Well, I think it's a great idea. I just am fearful of the fires. It's to honor local veterans.
There's been similar projects down other places.
How do you guys feel about it?
I didn't like finding them in my yard. If my field would have started on fire, I could have had a problem. And they didn't come down and burned up or nothing, there was a whole balloon and everything in there.
If we, if they would land somewhere, who would be liable?
That'd be a great question for the fire marshal, I don't know what happens with any fireworks that land, shells land, I don't know. Don't know.
I mean, honestly, these are probably safer than a regular firework.
I've had regular ones come down.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, because like he said, I mean, they get hot, and then they float, and then the part that burns goes out, and then they just float down.
You said you found them whole.
Yeah, in our field.
Yeah, they must have burned out and then plummeted.
They went from down to the park, or the ballpark down there, we watched them going over there, we were at the fireworks the other, when we got home the next morning, we found them out in the field. That's just because the wind was blowing that way. They were out of control. Anything that goes up that's out of control, I don't want to take away from the celebration, but it's kind of hairy.
But they're not going to launch them if it's windy, are they?
No, that's, that's the thing, you'd be under extremely tight controls as far as that, because you wouldn't want to launch them unless it were really very still. I think anything over like a four mile per hour wind, you wouldn't want them, because they go that way. And so you want them to be able to climb high enough that they're well above the trees, and that was part of the idea, I think, about the depot, was that you actually have a big open rock area for them to be able to get a light before they would encounter any trees.
So if, and what do you think about them?
Especially if the wind was going that way.
You think they'd land on the railroad property if we have any, they'd have any concerns about that?
Oh, no, they'll float wherever they float.
Yeah, I, the idea being, I think, this time of year is that the predominant winds are out of the south, or south, some southerly directions, so it would carry them north in a way, and more than likely, depending on how big they are.
Terry's house.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
Or two.
Railroad yards, if they're going to do it at the depot, they'd probably stay in the railroad yard.
Mostly, because that's where the wind, when, you know, the wind whips through down here pretty heavily. It'd just, I mean, wind, like I said, the four miles per hour is enough, something light like this would actually propel it. And if there's anything really gusty, it would just...
I've seen them topple them.
Yeah, yeah. So you wouldn't want to do it under all circumstances.
Well, what would they do if the conditions weren't right and they've already bought them?
They'd reschedule. That's the only thing you could do. And then, and then if it's outside the window, because of this, you'd have to go back and get permission again. But it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be worth the risk. I mean, I, when I, actually, when this was first brought to my attention, I was pretty nervous of it, but I did quite a bit of reading on it. Put me, put my mind at ease quite a bit to know that it's not reinventing the wheel. They have big festivals of these, obviously in China, but it's, yeah.
They have a farmland there, I'm just kidding.
Rice fields, yeah.
Why don't they do something else that's safer for the veterans?
Well, this is unique and something kind of special, and it's a little bit of a take off, if you look at the Relight for Life and different things, where the lantern and the symbolism of that, and I, I think that's kind of part of the idea, whereas anything else is more flash and bang, this is more kind of solemn, I think was the idea.
Who's our fire marshal?
Well, fire chief.
Who would, when you use the word "fire marshal," who's the fire marshal?
The state, it's out of state, Topeka, Topeka, there's an office, fire marshal's office.
Wouldn't be our chief of fire here.
No, no, but he would be, he'd have to be consulted as well.
So you'd have to check Marshall County, and you'd have to check the state as well, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
I mean, if they...
You could make a contingent on...
On their signing up on it, approval.
At that date, which they, you won't know till that date.
Yeah, you won't know till the day out. I think you'd be fine, I don't think everybody'd have a problem with contingencies, I wouldn't.
Yeah, you can, you can make the motion, subject to no burn bans by the county or the state on that date, if you want to. I ask if we could put a little light in it, you know, like a fake, instead of the burn, have a little, you know those little votives?
I know, votives, electric votes, you know what's funny is, the state's actually more concerned about those, because they have batteries.
That's right.
They don't want them, they don't want the batteries laying out, they're more concerned about that than fire.
But then Debbie told me that, Debbie told me that they don't lift without the heat.
That's right, that's right.
So you'd just be sitting there with the... So you might as well have a luminaire.
Around that, yeah.
All right, council, what do you want to do?
I would make a motion to approve the application for fireworks discharge waiver for the Union Pacific Railroad Depot Preservation Society on Sunday, May 27th, this year.
Subject to the burn ban?
Yeah, subject to a, whether there's a burn ban or not.
From the state and local level?
Yep.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oppose.
Six, one. All right. We'll have to pray that they don't float to Terry's house. Okay. Anything else, Debbie?
No tonight, thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to standing committees. Street, I would just like to say that I thought cleanup went extremely well, and I'm very excited to see how much crack sealing they're doing, even though they don't have a trailer, they should, they should do more with the...
They're getting around pretty good, looks like. I think we're slick.
Some days it's a, it's a block and a half, other days it's five.
Yeah, so I think... I'm excited to see them using it right away, though, that was, I read it in the highlight, so I was glad to hear about that. You guys have anything else for Street?
I have something to say.
Okay.
I had, were you just going to say something, Terry?
Yeah.
I was going to say what the street committee had decided.
Yeah.
Go for it.
It's on the 17th of April, the street committee met with the head of the street department, city administrator, discussed using the asphalt millings the city has stored at the dump. At the last city council meeting, my idea was to use these asphalt millings on North Eighth Street and Jayhawk Road and North 11th cul-de-sac, and it would help eliminate the mud and the dust. This idea was met with mixed comments by the council. I brought a sample, but I went over there and picked up, if anybody wants to look at what I found, it's a lot different than what you looked... I brought a sample, but I went over there and picked up, if anybody wants to look at what I found, it's a lot different than what you looked at the other day. And that's right out in the middle of the pile. However, at the street committee meeting, the street department agreed to run a test plot of asphalt millings on a dump road to see how it would hold up before hot weather gets here. That will allow everyone to see if it's a good idea or not. So therefore, the street committee is recommending that the city council approve applying asphalt millings on the dump road.
Do you mean you had a motion to that effect?
Can, I would say consensus would.
Consensus of council? So this was a compromise position, because Gary was kind of against it. So the compromise to try it on the dump road and see how it holds.
Experiment?
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds good.
All right, everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm not.
Consensus.
If you, if you go and drive to Winterfred, they have it down. It is rougher than rough.
Yeah. I, I talked to a few people that I know, and somebody from Hall Brothers, I did some research online, and I couldn't find anybody that. There are a few places, I think it was in Wisconsin where they put it down, what they did was they, they ground it up again, I think. And then they added a little bit of oil, so it'd ease a little bit. And then they, they took belly dumps and they dumped it out, and they bladed it, and they mixed it on the road. And then they got anywhere from a twenty to forty percent dust reduction. You're not going to eliminate the dust. You might, you might improve the dust condition a little bit, but you're not going to eliminate it with dust.
Well, I think Gary's concern was he felt like they were going to move. So they're going to spread them and roll them. He, he was saying that.
How, how long are we going to let it sit down before we decide? Because I don't think you'd be able to tell in a month's time. I mean, it's something you're going to have to, you might know in a year's time.
If you, if you let it go.
You have to go through in winter. I mean, you can't throw it down, and then one month later, so it looks good and it's fine.
For proper tests, they would have to go through at least four seasons.
Freezing, and, yeah. I'm just, I'm just afraid of, you know, spending time and effort, we've got other projects going on, to try something that other people have tried and had mixed results with at best.
Who did you talk to out at, out at?
I talked to a friend of mine that actually runs one of the asphalt plants.
Well, you talked to Lauer, or did you talk to Rowdy Bush?
I did not talk to Lauer, but it would be a guy that runs their plants for him. It deals with, I mean, he works his plant to make saw mix.
Well, that's conflicting, interesting information that I received from both of those gentlemen, and they sell asphalt. That's.
I think, I think if we had the equipment to grind it back up again, fine, or if we had taken it out there immediately after they ground it. But the asphalt there has almost no oil in it. So you're not much better off than just throwing some more, in my opinion, throwing some more aggregate and stuff down. But you're, if you go throwing that out on there, and then you have a bunch of chunks, and who's going to go picking up? I mean, how many hours is it going to take to pick all the chunks up out of everything? And if we don't have a, a screen or something to sift out the chunks, how many hours is it going to take to try and get the chunks out of it?
Didn't he say it would just take four hours?
He thought, he thought half a day, but that's on the dump road. Uh, so that's considering basically a one lane road for what, however many feet that is. It'd take him half a day.
About a hundred yards.
Yeah, somewhere in there. And, uh, because they'd lay it down, and they'd have the guys going through and picking out all the chunks. Uh, and that's, that's full force if they're all working on it.
But he, his recommendation was not to do it, or?
He didn't think very highly of it.
See, now, that's, and that's one of those, it's one of those things, like the meeting the other day, is, is that, you know, if you, if you get a professional opinion, then it's, you have to really think hard before you go against a professional opinion. And all professional opinions have gotten. I did talk to one guy that had good luck with it, but he lived out in the country. He put it down as a base, so he dumped it on mud. And then the chunks worked into the mud, and then he said two years later, then he covered it up with rock on top, and it worked great. And that is one of the improved uses is for a base, but I think it was New Jersey, it's not permitted as a top surface.
Which there's a, there's a company that, that, that actually go, has asphalt zipper.
Yeah.
What they could do is they come up, mill it up, right there.
Yeah.
And they, I don't think they had anything. They grinded up right there, and that ground up asphalt is now the new base for your street. It's, it's a base.
Yeah, and that's an improved use, and I could see that, but I'm just afraid of on top of what you drive on, where you get chunks. And, and the dump road probably isn't going to, well, it might bother the guys if they have to go out there and try and knock the weeds down or whatever. But you throw it out on the road, and it gets in the ditches, and then people are hitting it with their lawn mowers and whatever.
Quit talking about that here. Now, we decided to test the road, and that's it. We're not going back, are we?
Well, that's kind of.
They agreed to test the road, just to test the dump road.
Okay.
Then if everybody don't like it, it's just like what you already did to it, a third of the way.
Okay, you guys are, okay?
You tested.
Okay, we'll continue. We'll continue on.
If you, if you want to, since we already discussed it, ten AM, Terry, tomorrow. Ten AM, if you want it. That's what is planned, they're going to try. Gary told me this morning that he's going to try to start it at ten AM, uh, to, to go.
Okay, did somebody else have Street?
Um, did you, or did somebody go and take a look at thirty six kind of breaking up in front of the United Bank branch?
I haven't had a chance, I have seen it, and I've looked at it. I haven't had a chance to talk it through with possibly Hall Brothers or something like that.
Might as well go right down the street, right in front of the Catch Basin, too, on the north side, because it's doing the same exact thing.
I'm afraid how much worse it'll get before.
Are you talking about in front of the car wash, or the exit for the car wash?
No, no, no.
Where are you at?
United Bank.
United Bank?
Up across from Sonic.
Just down to the net, wherever the next Catch Basin is on the north side, it's doing the same exact thing. There's a strip in there, too, that's going bad.
Turning into scales.
It's like it didn't settle underneath it.
I think that's exactly what it did, it settled out.
A little line there.
Uh, the plan was to, to find out, see if it was a huge project, uh, and how we could proceed with the project itself.
Well, yeah, I don't want to just be throwing coal mix.
No, it needs to be fixed. No, it's, it's going, it's going to be one of those cut out, put back.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome, we'll check that out. Did someone else have Street?
Uh, yes, I wondered if we had any progress on finding the numbers, house numbers.
We haven't found anything that matches the international building code.
So are you continuing to look?
Yeah. Yeah, unless, I mean, we can go with three inch numbers, and that's, that's like the easiest thing to find in the world. It's, everybody's selling three inch numbers.
I think Gary had a supplier, they're five dollars each, or something, a dollar each.
For four inch numbers?
Uh, for sure.
Okay.
You mean, have what, copper?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
You, you want to bring back our options, maybe, next meeting?
Yeah.
You what?
You found someone that wanted to make entire signs.
Oh.
Whether you do one oh one, one oh two, one oh five.
Yeah.
That's a mess.
That's a mess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Darlene's going to keep bringing this up, so you better bring us some options, okay? All right, anything else?
Footsteps.
Anything else from Street? Water, wastewater, I just want to say that I thought they did a good job on notifications. I got my emergency notice from Marshall County, and I got another notification from Marshall County, and I saw, read in the highlights where they went to all the businesses and residents affected, and gave them notices, so I was very pleased to see them executing that.
Well, and when we, our committee had met April the second, we, there were, we were to have a policy, uh, drafted to present to council, and we haven't had that yet. Working on it, my misunderstanding. Okay. Thanks, Darlene.
So she'll bring it hopefully next meeting. Anything else on water, wastewater?
Do you want to discuss that meeting we had? We didn't really come to consensus. Um, I mean, we can talk about advertising, if that's what you want.
Uh, well, we, we had a meeting of water and wastewater at six fifteen, and talked about the position, and, um, we, we didn't come to specific recommendations, but we talked about at the end of the meeting, about potentially, uh, uh, hiring two seasonal slash part-time. Which one was it?
Seasonal.
Seasonal, in hopes that maybe one of them would become full time when fall comes. That would our, that would be our perfect scenario, really. And if not, we'll just have to, you know, if we lose both seasonal, then we'll have to consider how possibly having it go out to hire for, for time. But that way it kind of breaks, well, we also talked about, um, the cleaning of the lines, and they got an estimate, a ballpark estimate to do over a four-year period, at twenty-four thousand a year, is that right?
Yes.
So twenty-four thousand a year, they'd come in.
It'd be twenty-four thousand. Well, actually, you, you could do a contract where they say, over the next however many years, and I've done those contracts with, with, uh, with sewer cleaning, uh, that you, they'd have a set price for, for every year. So, yeah, I guess twenty-four thousand would be.
Yeah, I think it was twenty-four thousand, and we thought it would take about four years to do all the lines in Marysville, and just kind of have it set up on a rotating basis, and go ahead and contract that out rather than having our people do it. Historically, water, wastewater, we, our staff does the emergencies and the day-to-day maintenance of the water, all the checking of stuff. And then we hire out CIPP, and we hire out, um, water lines, and we hire out flush tanks. And so water lines, so we would hire this out, but it would be on a rotating basis and kind of keep our, our lines clean. The other thing, uh, that we talked about, too, was valve turning, but we did not have an estimate on that. We have over four hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, four hundred valves, and we could potentially have that contracted out as well. So we'll bring it, Austin will bring a bid for that next time. All right? But really, this is just to kind of get somebody used to this water sewer department, and see if they fit in. You know, and also, we wanted to start doing those water meter swaps, and it would give us some manpower to do that as well. So are you guys okay with them, them going ahead and hire a couple seasonal people, put a bit, put a proposal in the paper?
Yep.
Everybody okay with that?
Sounds good.
Is consensus okay with it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Alrighty.
Because is Lily not staying then?
Well, Lily, um, we don't have any official notice.
No official, no official notification.
So.
So this would be an additional to Lily, who is still part-time?
And that part-time means that she has to work less than, or up to nine hundred and ninety-nine hours per year. That's her, that's the limitation.
So then we would have three part-time?
We have a part-time and two seasonal.
Oh, part-time and two seasonal, okay.
And, um, you know, it will give us a good check to see.
Right.
How much they get done, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, anything else? Parks and rec?
Something on that. Um, I know we've talked about sidewalks, I've talked about sidewalks at Lakeview, as far as getting down from the upper lots, down through the walk-through gate to get down to the ball fields, so people aren't walking on the, on the road when traffic's coming in and out. Um, I talked to somebody today who was a little concerned about the amount of dust that comes from people driving up and down the road, through the gate, and a little bit the leaving as well, although that's as much of a washout problem as it is a dust problem. But I guess, he had talked to maybe Austin about potential future asphalt or through there or something. And I said, Bill, that might be a solution. You know, something else I thought we should at least consider, given the relative cost of asphalt, would be concrete, at least for the section to the gate. I don't know, I've never seen a long-term plan where from Twentieth Street to the gate wasn't going to stay the same. I've never seen where we would ever change that particular section. Uh, I mean, the parking area down there, you can say, well, we might change the layout, or, I know there was a plan at one time to create a fourth ball field, but, but from the actual chain-linked gate to North Street, um, as far as I'm aware, there's never been a plan about changing that. So that would seem like a place where if we're going to consider improvement there, rather than do dust control, and as an, as an option off of asphalt, maybe we should consider concrete. To at least that, there's that low water, little washout thing there. We got it to there, and did that in conjunction with a sidewalk to get from the upper to the lower, there'd probably be some mobilization savings doing all that concrete work at first. I just wanted to put that out there as something you can look at.
At the last convention and tourism meeting, you know, they talked a little bit about Lakeview and, and Phil Field, and I encouraged them to give us a plan of what you want done in the next ten years, like, give us a plan so that we can work on it.
And that, and I don't, and I wouldn't want us to start even consider doing something we're going to want to change in a couple of years.
And that's why, if you give us a long-term plan, so we can visualize it, no, it's not going to change. So I, I kind of encouraged them to do that.
Yeah. But, I mean, I'm just kind of curious what the council thought as far as, I mean, the sidewalk's kind of my, my peeve, because there's a lot of people walking in the road, and it just seems like eventually somebody's going to get clipped through there. But is that something, I mean, we could consider tying into some future project, just that one section?
Well, the sidewalk really is a safety concern, I know, because it's.
Where are you going to put the sidewalk at?
There's, there's room on the south side. There's, in the walk, where the walk-through gate is, it would have to either be shelved or filled just a little bit to make a, more of a berm to put it on, but there's enough room, I believe, based on IBO for ADA sidewalk. You would, well, is this good enough picture?
Not good enough.
Probably not.
Probably not.
But the idea being, okay, right here, there is a flat area, you can kind of see it between this parking.
Right.
On the drive.
Right.
Along here, and you could tie it all the way down to here, behind these bleachers, and behind that dugout, and get up to, if you could get up to this parking area, because there is quite a bit of overflow parking up there. And there's the gate on the south side of the road, so that would allow.
The gate to the hills where you're going to have to put some more fill in.
I think it takes some fill, but I don't think it would be, it's not super steep.
Right.
Well, again, I think that Brian should bring what their plans are, just to make sure.
Okay.
Don't you think that's?
Yeah, I, like, I'm, I don't want to do anything that's going to cause us, us to tear out good concrete in five years.
If we're going to, if, if we're going to wait on a plan for any improvements, uh, would it? Can we do, they proposed dust control itself, like the actual dust control, and maybe do that this year to stem off some of the dust. And they got a bid of eight hundred and forty-eight dollars, uh, to, to do both entrance and exit. So that would stem off for this year, so they can create, they can have the plan for the, for the project.
So not the lot at all, though, just the drives?
Yeah. I'm saying it's just. I think it's just the drives, the entrance and exit.
You know, I don't know if they could go far, I'm, I hate dust control in that it's just throwing money away, because it goes away.
Well, I can't imagine we're, we're going to do dust control in that of the people that live on.
Right.
gravel streets.
Yeah, and I, I think they're going to get a lot of dust off the field, unless you did all of it between the ends of the railroad ties and the south curb.
If you think about it that way, then if we're asphalting or concreting that, rather than somebody's, uh, dirt road.
This, this, I look at is like, the part I'm talking about is a good long-term investment in a facility, and, and also a safety issue. And I, I think if you tie those things together, it would improve access, improve visibility, you know.
I still want something from Brian that says we don't.
Yeah.
Okay.
As a, as an absolute.
I don't know, who's on the parks committee? So.
And then, um, why I bring up the dust control, they also said they'd pay for half of it, and to, uh, if we were to stem it off for another year, they need the answer by May one for dust control.
They would pay for half of it.
They will pay for half of it. So, I mean, that's, that was an option thrown out there, so if we're going to just think about the long-term options and wait for a plan, I think that would be a good option. Because the other one, I was talking with Gary about it, is that they would rather, because millings were brought up as well. Not by, not by Terry, but in, in another conversation. And I brought that up with Gary, and he said, why not just do it right the first time? He wouldn't mind adding it into the asphalt rotation where we could put asphalt down.
And that's what I kind of assumed, based on the conversations I had with the rec folks, but I, I, I just assumed we'd look at a longer-term solution than that.
Right.
Okay, well, we'll get to Brian.
It's all, it's all gradients of getting it done right.
Well, oh, we should ask, do you want to, so are we going to, I don't foresee us doing the concrete this year.
I doubt it will happen.
So do you want to agree to pay four hundred dollars towards dust control and leave it at that? No?
No.
There's all these no's?
I don't want to open the worm.
No discussion, huh?
I do not want to touch that.
Nobody wants to make that motion.
The only way I would say we'd do it is if we really carved it and stowed it, it's a one-time thing, and then we do address this.
And that's continued on us, yeah.
Yeah, I know, that's balls in our court.
It wouldn't necessarily take a motion, since it was, it's only four hundred bucks, that's just consensus, but if you don't want to do it, that's fine. I'm on, I'm on either side of this thing, so.
I'm, I'm seeing a, I don't see anybody making that motion. I'm seeing a, I don't see anybody making that motion.
Well, I'll make the motion to get it on the floor, that we paid $400 towards dust control.
Is there a second? Okay, I guess it dies for lack of a second.
I would be okay if they want to take on the expense themselves.
I'll pay for all of it? I guess we'll leave it in, they can make that decision, right? Okay, but we will just get some stuff from Brian, and figure out what our next plan for a year or two, we'll put it in, hopefully, the next year, once they say they're never going to change it. We need to hear that from them.
And if we were to improve that north side, the exit side, it's been a washout problem.
Well, I think we should do both, if we do one, we should do-
No, it'd be a total problem.
I mean, everything but the lot itself, because that's a whole separate animal.
Okay, all right. Anything else on Parks and Rec?
They started on the sidewalk up there today.
I saw them up there.
There's a chance, in fact, Brian was, I was talking to Brian about it, and he was watching him and talking to him too. He might have it done tomorrow, the whole thing. I think he started digging out the parking as well.
Did he get going on that?
Yeah, and the way Brian thought he heard was it might be done tomorrow, pending weather.
All board. Wow.
There you go, efficiency. Okay, cut that out. Anything else on Park and Rec? Cemetery and Airport? Police and Fire?
Do you want me to do this? You want to do it?
I don't want to do it if not.
We had a meeting, and they're looking, we had the principal there, and we had some of the school board there, and we were talking about an SRO school. And Todd has been talking to someone who's got eight years of experience, and he, right now, he's willing to move to Marysville. I haven't talked to Todd in a week, obviously, but according to the principal, there's a need. It just is. And they would, they would be paying 75% of the officer's wage, because he would, we would only utilize him three-quarters, they would utilize him three-quarters of the year, and then he would flip over and come over to the regular force.
And they pay 75% of everything?
Benefits and everything.
Okay.
Yeah, all of it.
And so, what is our timeframe, what are we looking at?
I have to get back to him on that. They're looking to have him here for fall.
For fall?
Yes, when the school starts.
And he mentioned about that grant for SROs?
Yes, yes, he did.
Is that going to come to fruition?
Well, it's a little, who knows now, but I'm sure he's going to be applying for it.
He was waiting for it to open up.
The grant?
The grant itself.
When's it coming?
He got a preliminary letter saying he was going to open up, didn't say when. But it was opening up with the, because it's a, it's a cops grant, so you could, if you were hiring a new police officer, you could apply for that, but the letter said they were stressing student resource officers. So they would be given priority. We would have a contract for him to be, him or her, to be over at the school, just like Sergeant Oldy is right now. He goes, does his dare, does his school stuff.
They don't pay us anything for that?
They don't pay us anything for that, no. But it would be a contract, he would have to be, he or she would have to be on our books as a law enforcement officer, but the contract would state that these are their hours over at the school, and-
They would reimburse us?
They would reimburse us, yes.
So the 75% of the time they're over there, they're full-time over there?
Yes.
Like, we would have no scheduling?
If there was an emergency, they could be, no, we wouldn't schedule, but if there was an emergency, we could potentially pull them into that emergency to assist.
Will they work the same hours that our guys work?
No, they'd-
I mean, that, seven amount of hours?
The other time, no.
He's got, he's going, they talked about, he'd be going to, and just to keep himself familiar with, you know, the kids at the school, he'd go do football games and evening events to be there also. So besides just being there at the school, and being available, you know, to the students, they want him to go to the activities also.
So any overtime he has during that time would be billed to them?
I doubt they would have overtime, just the hours.
I'm just saying, she's talking during the day and events.
Well, and why they're, well, they, Dave has set forward, and the kids are very comfortable with an SRO officer there. And so what they're going to try to do is, you know, they're going to work them into that, and then they just, they think it's a really good idea to keep these kids familiar with him, see him at events.
I understand that, I'm just saying, whatever hours he works during that nine-month period, they would pay for it. That's all I wanted clarification.
Now, what happens on, like, a day he's sick, or something like that? Then do we have to provide an officer that day?
No, I mean, same rules apply. Oldy might go over if necessary, but if, or whoever, whatever SRO, because we have two student resource officers trained right now. But I'm sure it'd be treated as a sick day, like any other job.
But they want to know by, basically, what we're going to do by May the, by May the 18th, is when their next school board meeting is, so they kind of know what we're willing to pay, so that they kind of know what they can offer too, so.
And I was going to put together what it would cost us, or, yeah, what it would cost us with salary and benefits for that summer, summertime that we would have in full-time. And then, because that would be our portion, what we would be willing to put aside in our budget. And that's without, if we got any cops grant, which lasts for, I believe, five years. They pay for like a 90%, and then it goes down to 70, for an example, and it keeps going down each year. So I would be able to figure out how much money we would be setting ourselves up for when it's full-time our payment.
How much we would be willing to pay is what they want to know for their school board meeting, which is May the 18th, so.
Well, as long as we clarify that any hours he works during that nine-month timeframe, it's not 75%, it would be during that nine-month timeframe, would be on them. So we could have him on our payroll, and he would just pay us whatever we pay him. And then the remaining three months, he's on our payroll, and we determine his hours. That's all, I want to make sure, yes?
I'm curious, just because we're only going to pay 25 cents of his wages, what about bulletproof vests, guns, shoes?
Oh, that's true, what about his equipment?
You start naming off all that stuff, we're talking a ton of money.
Well, we already pay 100 bucks per person in shoes. Yes, the uniform, I mean, that's all contract details right there.
Yeah, I mean, I think that as long as, I would expect as long as he's working there, 75% of the time he'd pick up any expenses related to his employment.
But then in the summertime, we're liable for his wages.
Yes.
Yes.
For the three months. But hopefully, Darlene, this three months, what could he do?
Code enforcement.
He could do code enforcement.
There you go.
So we'd have three months during the summer months to do code enforcement.
There you go.
By the end of the five years.
I thought for sure you were going to bring that up, Darlene, I've been waiting. But, so do we just have to have a consensus of council that we're accepting of that? You want a motion, what do you want?
Okay, so they said May 18th, let me, let me bring back, or what was it?
An acceptable contract?
Well, not, they want to know-
We have a meeting May 14th.
May 14th, they want to know what our acceptable pay is. And I'll bring, I'll bring as much documentation if we have a contract, or if we're actually working on the contract. But they want to know how much we're willing to pay an officer, so they can match that into their budget as well. So it's, I don't, they didn't have any reservations on what the pay would be.
Well, I'd go in and draft it up specifying that we expect them to pay whatever hours he or she works is theirs during that nine-month period, and make sure they have that.
And they had, they had some drafts of a contract that other SRO communities have worked on.
Okay, well, I think the consensus of the council is that we would do it. We want to need something further to vote on? Yes, Terry?
Well, I was curious, then, is he going to be a city employer, or is-
City employer.
Then are we going to pay all of his retirement benefits, insurance?
We're going to split those.
It's included in the salary, yes.
Yeah, so whatever they pay 75%, they pay 75% of all.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
If he decides to come, because I think he's making more money there, but he wants to move back to this area, I think.
But that, I mean, it could be that person, or it could be another.
Right, but nobody here wants to do it. We have somebody, but they don't want to take the jobs, so.
Yeah.
Okay, isn't that for you? Okay. Thank you for the report. Anybody else on Police and Fire? Admin and Finance, we didn't meet?
Yes, did you want me to go for that? Okay, you want to turn to pages 30 and 31? And Administrator and Finance met on the 19th, and we came up with a recommendation of 37 cents upward adjustment to the minimum and maximum wage scale for full-time employees, and that would be range 6 through 30.
That was our recommendation.
And possibly, at another time, we would look at seasonal and part-time.
We thought we'd do those individually, based on the circumstance.
And 37 cents was the cost of living adjustment that we made at the end of the year, or beginning of the year.
So it was basically, accepting the wage scale, it's on page 30. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the amended pay scale of 30, what'd you say, 37?
37 cents.
37 cents.
To the minimum and maximum starting pays, scale, pay wage.
I second.
Is there any discussion? All in there say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? 7-0, all right. The only other thing in Admin and Finance, actually, is more like everything. At that meeting, we talked briefly about budgets, and Austin believes he will have a budget prepared probably in June. So Darlene suggested maybe we should, since there's five new council members, that we have a meeting before the 29th, to review the 2018 budget, so everyone was familiar with the 2018 budget, this book. So when he brings the new one for 2019 in June, that we would be more prepared. How do you feel about that? I would expect it to last about an hour, hour and a half. Everybody would bring their books, we would just kind of go through it, talk about it. Of course, you know, a lot of it does stay the same, although a lot of it changes. But it's just to get you guys prepared, so when we do have the 2019 budget in June, we're more prepared. Your thoughts? You want to do it? Okay, so if I'm looking for a date, and I can do May 2nd.
What date is that on?
So Wednesday night. How late do you work Wednesday night?
7 o'clock.
Can we do it on a Tuesday?
No.
No?
I can't do Tuesday, May the 1st. I can-
You can come up with bingo?
I can do the 4th, Friday night.
Oh, I forgot about bingo.
Well, you know, you work till 7, we could do 7.
Do 7?
Well, it's only going to, it's not going to be like our budget workshops. Our department heads are not going to be here.
Okay, so it's not a normal?
Wednesday?
Wednesday.
I can't do, ever do a Wednesday.
You can't ever do a Wednesday?
I'm more familiar with the old budget.
But that's true, you might not be as-
I wouldn't be as big a deal.
Are you saying you never can do Wednesday either?
Not the first Wednesday.
What about that Monday of that week? I can do Mondays.
That 30th? Hi, Brian. I, I can probably do it. So I could probably, to be safe, can we do it at 7?
Yeah, let's do it at 7.
Excuse me.
The 30th. What are you upset about? It's just to go over this, don't prepare anything.
I know, I know. I was really looking forward to having three weeks off from you guys, but, you know.
To be honest, though, I would expect, to be honest, we just need to go through it, and, you know, I would expect that meeting to last from 7 to 8, at the most 8:30. We're not going to beat this thing to death. We're just going to get you familiar with the different funds, and how they work together, and just to get familiar with 2018. There's, actually, that's probably a good thing for everybody to be familiar with, and go for the rest of the year anyway. So you want to do it on the 30th?
I don't care, that's up to you guys.
I can do the 30th.
April 37.
April 30th, at 7 o'clock. Oh, you think this will be open here?
Should be.
Should be open?
Change around if we can.
7 o'clock, okay.
Call whoever it is and tell them, sorry.
So I don't think we need department heads, it's just to kind of go through it and get familiar with it, got it? Can you do the Monday?
I'd probably do it. My calendar doesn't make sense, I'll have to talk to my wife.
Okay. And no appointments or wages, no city attorney, I don't know of an executive session, do you guys know of one? Okay, roundtable. First off, you guys see the new governing body handbook? Marysville, can you believe this? We are going to be on everyone's desk. Every city has our picture on their desk. Is that not awesome? I was so excited when I saw that. And the other thing I just want to make, I wrote some notes out, but I, I felt like this was the best conference I've gone to, and I've gone through quite a few. And the thing is, it was really information, lots of information. And I'm just going to throw a few things at you, and I'll send the rest of these out in the information packet next time. But it says the average attention span is seven seconds. Is that a Yikes comment? The average intention span is seven seconds, that's whole. And then it also said a person only has so much decision-making capabilities on any given day, so try to keep it brief, so I like that. I also like this, conflict is normal, conflict can strengthen relationships, conflicts due to different priorities and different personalities, and it's a myth that conflicts go away when ignored. I like that. It said, "Social media is not going away, embrace it." It says, "Encourage to using the elite staff." And just real quickly, I'll say, they really focused on, we as a governing body, to focus on our legacy, 50 years out, what are we going to leave as our legacy? I like that. Our big visions, what our job is, you know, the significance of our actions, educating the public, being consistent, being fair, asking citizens of their opinion. So, things like that I enjoyed. It talked a little bit about what our goals are. Our goal, our goal as a governing body is, is to have purpose and vision, set strategic goals and priorities, planning and oversight, all those big stuff. And I loved this, it talked about different leadership styles, talked about different generation of workers, how to make that work, how, the big differences, the big different experiences that they have, and expectations and concerns, and making that workforce work together. And then the different leadership styles. And I think I am, it was, I am a pace setter. And it says, "Setting high-performance standards for myself and staff, but never expecting more from others than myself." I think that is my leadership style. However, when those standards are not met, I become a command and control person, taking control and owning. I figure I start as a pace setter. But anyway, they also said all this information was going to be online, which is extremely helpful, and I know everyone else probably has something they want to share, but it was, it was an incredible conference, and I'm delighted that we had three of our five new people go. So, with that being said, I'll leave this to the very end, so now I'll go to roundtable with Darlene.
And you are ordering books for the ones of us who couldn't go?
Debbie?
Yes.
You didn't take anybody else's?
We weren't able to find any.
There was a tag that says, "You are allowed to have one."
Yeah.
And you want us to break the rules as leadership?
It even had your name on it.
Well, you wouldn't have one copy, we would give one copy, that was the idea.
We did not break that rule. Okay, so anything else?
Yes. Wednesday, Boss Motors is finally celebrating our 80th anniversary. Frank Boss and his partner, Art, oh, can't think of his last name right now. Bought the business in 1937, and then in January, received the Ford franchise. And we thought Wednesday would be nicer than January to celebrate. There'll be food all day long, so all be come. And Austin, would you pass it on to the, all the staff and employees?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, and our small audience out here, you're all invited all day long.
Okay, I'm going to read this proclamation then. Whereas this year marks the 80th anniversary of Boss Motors, and whereas Boss Motors was founded in 1938 by Frank Boss, with the building at 605 Broadway being built in 1985, and whereas Boss Motors serves numerous people in the city, county, and surrounding areas, offering Ford vehicles new and used for sale, as well as wilderness by Fleetwood RV Line, and whereas Boss Motors has seen and adapted to many vehicle regulation changes in safety, EPA, and technology, and whereas Boss Motors has been a family-owned and operated business, and has been a thriving part of the downtown business community, and now therefore I, Carter Grunmeyer, do hereby proclaim that Wednesday, April 25th, is to be known officially as Boss Motors Day, and call all the citizens of the city of Marysville, join me in actively supporting and celebrating Boss Motors. Sign this 23rd day of April 2018. So, thank you for 80 great years.
Thank you.
Anything else, Darlene?
No.
Okay, Bobby?
I just want to relay a few things, a couple of things that they said that really struck home for, I think it would be all of us, and I also was thrilled with this conference. I can't wait to go to the next one in October. It was, it was well worth going. It says, know what all your voters think, not just the angry ones. So that's, don't always listen to the squeaky door. Let's see. It did not, oh, it's, it's, okay. It's not always yes or no, there is a maybe. Vote your conscience and your gut on it, and be constant and fair. If you feel it's a valid reason why, get the citizens involved, ask the citizens together for their input, and they're flattered if we do ask. Those were, those are good points. We need to go and ask people. I get the chance every day, or I'm told anyway. You know, and I, and you know, I appreciate it, I do. You know, sometimes I want to go la, 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 but, you know, all in all, you know, that's.
I thought it was interesting, they said, so I'm used to people telling me, but to go and actually ask other people is kind of different, because people don't ask, say to me, I assume everything's okay, but I don't think that's necessarily true.
No, I mean, and we get, we get the conversation going, you know, and I'll, so, you know, I'll ask them, say, what do you guys think about this? And they'll tell, I mean, they'll tell me, or, you know, some are like, oh, I don't care. You know, I mean, I get a lot of, well, you know, whatever. But there'll be those certain ones, they will, they'll give me a very, very precise opinion, and I appreciate it. I'm done.
All right, Terry?
Oh, it was a real nice deal. I think it was very informative. I'm not as anxious about going next year, because I got my little Bible right here.
Yeah, it's very helpful, isn't it?
I don't think I'll be needing to go next year.
Well, between this and that, the government handbook that you guys prepared in the House, I mean, these are huge steps in knowing what's going on with the cities.
Yeah, they're informative.
Yeah, yeah. And then after your budget training on the 30th. Okay, Todd?
Nope.
Diane?
Well, I wasn't able to go, because we had the Legion convention in Marysville this weekend, and people are very impressed with Marysville, they think it's a neat town. Weather wasn't very nice, so we didn't really, I encouraged them to go see the black squirrels because I handed out the maps and the little scavenger hunt thing.
Oh, good for you.
But I even went and bought a little black squirrel, so, for a contest, but most of them didn't get out of their cars to go.
Because it was raining.
No, because it was kind of rainy. But they did go look at several of them, and they thought they were cute, so, anyway, but they were impressed, and they all think Marysville's a really neat, cute, historic town, very nice. So hopefully, maybe even if we have another convention, which we probably will, they'll go out, and I said we were going to get 10 more, so there'll be more of them for them to go look at, so. But they all do like, they love coming to Marysville, so, anyway, that's why I didn't get to go to the meeting, so hopefully I will get to go to the next one.
You did your fair share doing, taking care of that.
So, anyway.
Yep.
So that's all I have.
Talking about squirrels, our cities, we don't have an artist for our city squirrel.
Uh-huh.
We don't have an artist.
Oh, we don't?
No, so if you know somebody who's very talented and can.
Why, they didn't like our plans?
No, they chose someone else. So we're still looking for an artist.